I now call to order this December 5th meeting of the Friendswood City Council and announce that we have a quorum. We have a full house, actually. They're all here, speaking around the corner. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Mike Cervantes with the New Hope Church of Friendswood. Please remain standing after Pastor preaches or says a prayer. I should give you the opportunity to preach. Don't preach.
He said it, just remember that.
Make it a short sermon.
You never give a pastor. Mike, let me pray for you. Father, I thank you so much for all the men and women that are here today. God, I thank you that you're always so good. And God, I just pray for a spirit of peace, God, and a spirit of just resolution, God, that you would handle all things well and that, God, we'd always look to you for guidance. I thank you for the men and women that are here to lead, and I pray that you would give them wisdom. We just thank you, God, for the season, a season which we can celebrate and give thanks. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I don't care. Thank God we're all either a man or a woman.
Thanks, Mike.
There's no in-between.
All right. Item four, council comments and reports. I'll go first, and I'll just want to say, James Tony back there, Parks and Recreation, keep Friendswood beautiful, all the volunteers out there, hit Santa in the Park, Out of the Park. That was so awesome Saturday, all day, Saturday night. You know, I was standing there, and the fireworks started going off, and I had to lean. After about four minutes, I leaned into James Tony and said, is this going to be as long as the Fourth of July?
Beautiful.
And it was just a few minutes longer, and it was so awesome, such a... I think somebody said we had 8,000 people out there. So excellent turnout. Good job. Who else? Steve Rocky.
I got the honor to talk to the Cub Scout Pack, which was about 50... it's boys and girls now, and there were about 50 kids and their parents and siblings, and they asked the greatest questions. It went on for an hour of them just asking questions, and some of the questions were really good. Some of them, one of them wanted to know how much we got paid, and I said zero, and then they said, well, what, how do you make money then? And I said, well, we all have other jobs. Well, how much you get paid in those jobs?
I said enough. But one boy was very enthusiastic about Mike being an astronaut, and he wanted to know, he wanted me to ask Mike the next time I saw him, did he ever see any aliens in outer space? So, Mike?
I did not. So, sorry. I know you all want to talk to a different astronaut now. Yeah, sorry.
But anyway, they were a lot of fun. They asked great questions. Some of them were really thought-provoking, and I really enjoyed it. So, and getting, whether, I guess they're like kindergarten to fifth grade, getting them all to sit for an hour and ask questions was quite a feat by the bosses there of the troop. So it was really fun.
Councilmember Branson.
Several, so bear with me. CDC had their collaboration meeting that we spoke about, and that was with the FDEDC, the Chamber of FDFA and CDC, obviously. And two main ideas were brought forward, the consolidation of our resources and information on economic development, and then also consistent messaging across all groups so that as each entity goes out into the community and talks to other businesses... Stephen's shaking his head, so thank you for that affirmation. Have a consistent message. There are subsequent meetings that are being scheduled as we speak to go ahead and move forward this. So I'm very excited about the progress that we're making with economic development. With my HGAC hat on, we have pop-up meetings that have been going on around the different counties. There are 13 counties in our Council of Government, and actually Murad attended the most recent one in Galveston County. We've done Waller and Fort Bend, but they're going to do those all around our area, and the whole idea is to bring the message to you. So HGAC wants to hear what is on the minds of the individuals in the counties around our areas. I think that's terrific. We're also, and this is myself and the executive director, we're holding one-on-one meetings with... so far, we've hit a couple of the, I shouldn't say hit, we have visited, excuse me, several of the Harris County Commissioners, and then also several of the Houston City Council members, including the mayor. And the, there, we're also trying to listen and hear, how can we work better together? So I'm very excited about that. And my final comment is that I would be honored to serve, or I have been honored to serve on council for the last five and a half years, and will be up for reelection this May, and I would be very honored to have the privilege to serve again another term. I do feel like that our council has been working well together with each other, and then also with staff, and I appreciate that. I also feel like that we have the city in good financial standing. I double-checked with Murad today. We are a double A-plus rating when we go out for bonds. That's huge. They don't give out triple A anymore, so that's as good as it gets. So thank you, I appreciate that. I feel like we've kept the tax rate in check. The time that I've been on council, we either have kept it the same, or we've been reducing it, so I feel like we've been doing a good job there. I'm most excited probably because I walk the streets of Friendswood with Richard Sassen. We have wires going away. We're not streetwalkers. But the wires are going away, the sidewalks are coming in, the new traffic signals are being installed, and I hope that the old traffic signals will be going away soon. So I feel like there's a lot of good things that have happened. Our street maintenance is probably in better shape than it's ever been. Our drainage, we have drainage projects that are underway and/or have been completed, for example, the Imperial Estates. So I feel like good work has been done, but I think there's more work to be done. I do feel like we still need to work a little more on relieving our traffic congestion. I think everybody will agree with that, especially at 8:00 in the morning and 5:00 in the afternoon. And then we still have more work to do with flooding, but all of these issues, they're large enough that they're bigger than what Friendswood can do on our own. We must work with other entities in order to make this happen, and I feel like that I'm well-positioned to help with that. So I would be honored to have the opportunity to serve for another three years on Friendswood City Council.
Councilmember Hanks.
I hope you do. So this past month, I got to attend the third town hall meeting for the, for the, what to do with the concrete slab where the old fire station used to be, that faces 518. It's kind of the face of our park, what you see. And James Tony, my hat is off to you and to Stephen both. Besides getting ready for Santa in the Park, you were well-prepared for that last meeting that I attended. I think it was well-attended, and it's obvious that comments that from the previous two meetings were listened to and became part of the plans that were thrown out there for others to consider. So I look forward to hearing that at a later date. And then I got to attend a luncheon with the senior citizens at La Casita and visit with some of them, and sat next to a woman I'd never met and found out that one of my older sisters and this woman graduated from high school back in 1960-something in Galveston. And her husband, who, the reference was she used to date somebody, I won't say who, but she used to date somebody, and so to tell my sister who he used to date, and so it was kind of like a home week. That was fun. So we had a good time, and I appreciate being asked to do that. James, thank you. And Michael, Michael Boyett, if you're out here, thank you. I know he does that a lot with the senior citizens. And then the last thing was the P&amp;Z had their retreat this past Thursday and, or Tuesday. And as always, they have lofty goals, but they've also, I think, a large part of the meeting was just reviewing all the accomplishments that have been made, and then, rather than pat themselves on the back too much, they talked about how they can make Friendswood even better. So it's a privilege to work with the caliber of those people that do such a good work. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gruffon, happy birthday in a couple of weeks.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that, turning a year older, hopefully a year wiser. I don't know, maybe, maybe not. But I know Samantha has a presentation here a little later, so I'm not going to steal her thunder. I too went to the senior citizens luncheon. I had it on my calendar for 11 o'clock, and I was the first one there, and nobody else showed up till almost 12. But I was there, and it was a great luncheon. We had a good time, and I always liked La Casita. And other than that, I won't see everybody again until after Christmas. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays. I was born on December 25th, 1960, so I'll be 62. And 1960, yeah. So it was a good time to be born, and I'm looking forward to turning 62, so that's it.
I'm running again. Right out the door.
Councilmember Aaron, Mayor pro tem, Aaron Wernedt.
I'm just going to echo what the mayor said about the Santa in the Park. It was a good event, a lot of fun, a lot of people. Can't thank the Parks and Recs, all the, was it 100, 100 or so volunteers, right? And then hope everybody has a good Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir. Okay, item five, public comment. In order to comply with provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda as such. The city council will listen to public comment and may, one, refer the item to city management for further action, or, two, direct staff for the placement of said item on a future agenda during public comment. The public shall comply with rules of decorum. Connie Radeso.
Hello, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
I'm going to be brief. I have a simple question. I know Samantha's about to come up here and give us an update on drainage, and I just want to ask the question, how many homes are we removing from what we had in Harvey, which was, give or take, 3,000 homes that flooded? Once we've completed all of these projects that she's going over, other than the homes that are being removed, how many are we saving? Thank you.
Thank you. David Allen.
David Allen, 214 Inwood, Friendswood. We were talking about naval officers that maybe have seen UFOs, probably not, but an interesting one is Jimmy Carter. He actually was a nuclear engineer. I believe he was on a nuclear aircraft carrier, and I think the date is 1969. But you can look it up online. He filled out an official report and turned it in that he had seen a UFO on this while he was onboard ship. So that's interesting. Of course, now he's our oldest living president. He's about 100. He's building Habitat for Humanity every day that he feels good enough to do that, and still chugging along. I want to talk today about this Smith-Mundt Act, M-U-N-D-T. It was in the 1940s, like 1945, and it was to prohibit American government funds from being used for propaganda on the American people. Now, of course, we all, we can look at our TVs and see something's going on, ABC, NBC, CBS, CNN, they all have the same weird phrases at the same time. There's too much coordination, really, to be normal news. But the fact is that in 2012, there was a modernization on that Smith-Mundt Act. And what it did was, it basically did away with the Smith-Mundt Act. Since 2012, which is about 10 years, the, we don't know the amount, but it is now legal to fund propaganda with our tax dollars on ourselves. So what I'd like to say is just be very aware of anything that you see. You know, the fact-checkers, of course, are us, people that call themselves fact-checkers, God knows what they really are, but we have to do our own research. And they want another pandemic because they like the way that the major, major corporations got so much richer, and the tiny businessmen went out. You know, the middle class has to be gotten rid of because that's in the way of their new world government. And so they're going to do another one. And in the next one, as I have mentioned before, let's not tell people that they're nonessential. You know, okay, let League City do that, but Friendswood doesn't have to do that. And let's use common sense because they're going to be coming at us with lots of propaganda, lots of things that sound good. They're always changing their story, and we just have to go along with human, a pro-human future, human sanity, and that's where it will be. It will be at the local level. Obviously, the national level's very questionable. The state, thank God, has some sanity, and this is an amazing local place that is wonderful to live in. And so let's keep it for ourselves, a pro-human future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item six, work session topics. Receive and discuss an update regarding the drainage update presented by Deputy Engineering Director Samantha Heratose.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm going to wait for it to pop up.
Good evening.
Oh, I do it? Okay. No, you're fine. Nope, it's not working. Okay, just tell me when, and I'll move it. Okay. All right. Good evening. Y'all have seen this map before, but I'm going to be talking about several projects on here this evening. So Long Clear Creek, starting at the northernmost portion of Clear Creek, the 1959 detention basin is in purple. Imperial Estates is south from there in blue. That project's completed. The sea-green color is Forest Bend. And then immediately below that to the south, the red and yellow are the Wickham inline-offline detention projects. And then south from that is the Black Hawk offline-inline detention. And then the orange is Frenchman's Creek. The star is the utility crossing relocation. And along Cowards Creek, there's three little, small, purple areas, and those are the three offline detention ponds that we are coordinating with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District on, along Castlewood. All right, Frenchman's Creek, green space. And I wanted to give a shout-out to FMO because they have been handling most of the acquisition on this project, and they've really done a lot of great, wonderful work. So this is a community block development grant from Hurricane Harvey Disaster Recovery. The city grant, Buildings Five and, or Four and Five have closed. On the county side, Buildings Two and Three are supposed, or, yeah, they actually did close at the end of November, and Building One has decided to sell, which is great news. They're expected to close towards the end of December or January. Once they close, the homeowners association will transfer the title over to the city of Friendswood for the green space, and then the project will close out. So there's demolition, hydromulching, and then this transfer of the title remaining. And then this project will wrap up here sometime at the mid to end of spring 2023. So it'll be the first community develop, or community, I have that backwards, community development block grant, disaster recovery, Hurricane Harvey grant to close out. The Forest Bend project, this is, this is the CAD drawing, and on, so on the, on the far right, the larger pond and, well, Pond B and Pond C are under construction at this time, and you can go ahead and flip it to the next. I have some great pictures coming up. Okay, there. Yes. So at this point, we've had about 1,100 cubic yards of material excavated from ponds B and C. The sidewalks are in progress. The electrical has been completed for the lighting. A gate and fence middle was approved recently, and there's a note on there that we're waiting on, and it's actually, actually an additional $320,000 that will be coming for this project from the general land office. The latest word is that Harris County is expecting to receive an amendment sometime in January or February, and then we will have to redo some of the paperwork for that money to be transferred over to us. So, next slide. These pictures were taken during Thanksgiving week, and if y'all remember, it was pretty rainy. So you can see the, the upper left and the, the middle two pictures are the Pond B and C, and there's some pictures of the sidewalk on there as well. But this project is coming along, and there's no delays. Things are on schedule. So if you haven't been out there, drive by and check it out. Next slide. This is a brief update on the three detention ponds along Cowards Creek. You can go ahead to the next slide. So this is 301 and, hold on, I have that.
301.
301, 310, and two Castle, West Castlewood and two Queens. So at this point, there's been fieldwork done. A geotechnical engineer went out and took some borings, and they're basically coming up with the initial design concepts. Two of the ponds are potentially going to be around 10 acre feet, and then the third one is probably going to be around 5 acre feet, and it'll be smaller because we have the disc golf course out there at this time, and we don't want to take that out. So the, the geotechnical report should be here in the next couple of weeks, and the hydraulics and hydrology will be in progress for a bit. Now that they kind of have an idea of what the dimensions of the ponds could be, they'll have to go and work out whether that's hydraulically possible. You can go ahead and switch to the next slide. The FM 1959 detention basin, so this is, this is an overview of the three projects that are included in the inter-local agreement. At the north is the FM 1959 project, and then more southerly is the Wickham Terracing and Detention Project. And I put two pictures on here because I think that it's really awesome that we have an ID number in the Harris County Flood Control District system, and that's what those numbers are. You'll be able to go to their site and look up these project numbers and find information as we, as we move along, in addition to updates from the city. So again, this is going to be somewhere between 1,000 and 1,800 acre feet of an offline detention pond. It's probably going to be closer to that 1,000 acre feet, but we won't know until approximately a year from now. At this time, the inter-local agreement for, between all parties, has been executed. The McDonough Engineering Corporation had been selected, and on the 15th of November, they, that was officially confirmed through the Commissioners Court meeting. So they are kicking off the preliminary engineering work at this moment. We're going to have a kickoff meeting here shortly with the various parties in December or January. And then also ongoing, there's actually a, an engineering study that has been done. We're working on getting that so we can look at it, but there were still some small pieces that hadn't been done, and they related primarily to a federal aviation administration requirement that, it's basically related to, to within a five-mile radius. If your project's situated within a five-mile radius of one of these airports, then they have to make sure that birds are, are not going to change their pathways, and it's, you know, it's not going to cause damage to air traffic. So, yep.
We want to make sure the birds are safe.
Well, that too. We want to make sure the birds are safe.
Yeah. Well, just, this is federal aviation requirements. It's not...
Yeah, we have to comply.
Yep. And as a reminder with this inter-local agreement, the Harris County Flood Control District's been tabbed as the lead agency that's going to manage these projects. Obviously, we have, say, an input on it, and we're also working closely with the state of Texas for the additional $10 million grant funds to supplement those projects. So some of these requirements at times may seem ludicrous, but it's a requirement.
Yeah, it's part of the process. Oh, that's, so I was going to bring that up, actually. So Hill and I went down to talk with the, the lady who's going to be the project manager from Harris County Flood Control District, and we are supposed to think about what we officially want the name of this project to be. Of course, we'll have to have all parties be in agreement on the name, but FM 1959 is probably not a great official name for the detention basin. And then, yes, we're really, we're really excited to get that going, so should have more the next update. I'm not going to talk about Wickham in detail because we really won't know more until we hear about that $10 million that's kind of on hold. This is a summary of the payment schedule that was in the inter-local agreement. Along the first line for FM 1959, that first payment of $954,233 has already been paid. The second payment will be due within 45 days of the first publication for construction bid advertisement, and it's a little over $7 million. So the preliminary engineering will take approximately a year, and then there will probably some, be some design engineering beyond that. So we're, we're realistically looking at probably one to two years of, you know, until that second payment is due. And then the Wickham inline-offline detention basins, I went ahead and put the payments up here just as a reminder. The first payment's 2.85 million, which if we received 10 million from the state, that would be due within 45 days. And then 24.15 million, that would be due within first publication of construction bid advertisement. And then the note at the bottom, that 24 million, it's not really 24 million coming from us because the 10 million award we received would go into that 24 million. So the reason I'm talking about this is because we reached out to ASO and asked what the impact to the tax rate would be from this, from the, the two projects. So if you could go to the next slide. So several assumptions...
Samantha, just to put that $7 million price tag, Friendswoods, what's the total price of that 1959? So we're just one entity that's contributing. So to let people know that...
Oh, right.
We're paying a fraction of what that...
So the, so if all three projects go into effect, it's over a $60 million project. I think it's around $61 to $62 million. Just the, just the 1959 project is around 32 to 38 million.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's a, it's a large project. We have, you know, Galveston County's putting in 7.5 million, Harris County Flood Control District's putting in 13 million, over 13 million, and then G, Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District is putting in, I believe it's 3.75...
I think 3.75.
Yeah, 3.75 million, so...
It's good to keep that in perspective because we promised the voters, when they approve this bond, that, you know, we would leverage that money, and that's what we're doing very well.
And I also, I will touch base on this. We, we had some very preliminary modeling done. If there was a 1,700 acre-foot detention pond constructed there, and it would remove 40 homes from the 100-year floodplain. We looked at, we looked at five projects together. We haven't looked at just the three that are in the inter-local, but I, I, we'll know more, we'll know more about how many homes are going to be removed as we move further along.
And just to add to Samantha's comments, the 100-year floodplain she's referring to was the Atlas, is the Atlas 14 100-year floodplain, which was the equivalent of the 500-year flood during the Harvey time.
Yeah, we could, we could probably have, potentially, if there was interest, we could, we could see what the, how many homes would be removed for the three projects before we move forward with the second piece of...
In the stress, you may recall when we were going out for the bond election in 2019, the dollars that were set aside for this effort were seed dollars, as the mayor aptly explained. But the totality of all the improvements far exceeded funding levels, not only for this jurisdiction, but the combination of all of our jurisdictions we're talking, we're... I'm sorry. I'll, I'll start over. In 2019, when we were going out for bond elections, we were going, we were offering seed money that we had used to partnership efforts with other entities to accomplish the greater flood mitigation effort and goal. We knew this was going to be a multi-year endeavor, and would ultimately be a multi-bond endeavor. The 52 million that we had authorized wasn't going to fix us in perpetuity. So this is incremental improvements that will continually need to be pursued. So this is incremental improvements that will continually need to be pursued. Hopefully, along the way, we'll continue to have the success of getting other partners on board, but it's an ongoing effort.
Thank you.
So um, the assumptions when, or, I'm sorry, were there any more questions?
I did, but he asked it, so I'm fine.
Okay. Uh, the, the assumptions that were made when ASO looked at the impacts to the tax or the estimated debt service tax rate impact. Um, the bonds would be issued in February of twenty twenty three. The um, there would be a thirty year maturity structure. The interest rate was assumed at four point seven five percent. And then there would be taxable assessed value growth of three percent between twenty three to twenty four, two percent from twenty twenty five to twenty six and one percent in twenty twenty seven to twenty eight and zero percent growth thereafter. And um, we've uh, we've been told that the, and I think we all know, the markets are pretty volatile right now. So the, the information that we got back is probably not gonna be exactly the same if, if we go forward. Um, so the impact, if the, the yellow column is the tax rate per one hundred dollars of assessed value and down at the bottom, you can see the tax rate increase is point oh one five per hundred. So it's a one point five cent added to the tax rate. Or if we don't want to, to um, adjust the tax rate, then seven hundred thousand dollars would be, need, would need to be moved from the general fund to pay the principal and interest payments for the thirty million bond issuance. Um, now, one other thing I, I want to mention, we have not looked at the uh, operation and maintenance costs in detail and how that would impact the tax rate. So um, I, I know that ASO has been looking at some preliminary numbers based on mowing, but that would be an additional discussion that we would likely have when we're looking at the budget.
And, and this is something we highlighted last month when we were discussing the interlocal agreement and have in months prior. Uh, obviously, the tax rate's a function of the values on the ground. So if values do what they have in the last few years, you're not gonna see a penny and a half increase in the debt service. You'll likely see something a lot less than that. Uh, but regardless, it will impact our tax rate because additional funds have to go to pay mortgage payments for that debt issued. I'm, if, if there are questions, obviously.
Well, I clearly won't be here for the next budget cycle, but I would prefer you pay it out of the general fund.
Well, in, in order to do that, we'd have to make cuts in operational expenditures. Um, so service levels.
If you have the revenue there to do it.
Yes, sir.
And it'd be nice to know how much more the operational cost after.
Yes. Co, each one of those ponds that Samantha had highlighted, uh, the lead agency is dubbed, the city of Friendswood is the operation, operator and maintainer moving forward. Uh, and that was the only terms in which they would agree to lend us their fourteen million dollars, for instance, from Harris County Flood Control District.
And that will have an impact on the budget?
Yes.
Yeah, significant mowing costs. Okay, one, okay, and then to add on a little bit better note. Um, we have heard back from TechStot, the Texas De- uh, Texas Department of Transportation uh, about the sound wall at FM twenty three fifty one. Um, so their thought is that if they remove some of the lower portions of four to, and, and we, they've, they've been bouncing stuff off with our engineering department as well. But, so we're, we're mutually thinking if we remove the lower portion of four to six panels and it could be up to twenty four inches in height, that um, this would help to relieve some of the, the constriction there with the flow. Um, so they are currently looking at doing something similar to this to see what that would do to the structural integrity of the wall and whether they would need to add supports or um, you know, how, how we would do this. Uh, and we should be hearing back, you know, in the next couple of months.
Well, I'm glad we're finally moving.
And it wasn't due to a lack of effort on our part.
No, I understand.
And if they come back and say the structural costs are too high, we'll just recommend taking the wall down altogether.
I don't know why we wouldn't take it all, uh, because the cherry tree, the cherry tree lane stuff, I'm sure needs to stay for sound abatement for the residents that live there. We wo- we wouldn't want it, but for the park, Frankie Carter Park?
We have made that argument. Harris County themselves do not care. They're fine with them coming down, but TechStot has been adamant that they remain.
Rent a bulldozer for a hundred and twenty five dollars an hour, just knock it all down, be done.
Well, what you do after this meeting when we're not watching, I won't say anything.
If I was gonna do it, it would have happened a long time ago, obviously, but uh.
Yeah, yes, sir.
So Samantha, have they calculated, or maybe there's no, no effect, when you remove the lower portion of those walls, how fast water might flow or how much more water might flow? Is any, does that need to be taken into account or?
Um, there's been no hydraulic assessments at this time. Um, I, I.
With the, with the detention pond, the Harold Whitaker Pond directly across the street, uh, the impact of that would fill that faster. But obviously, as the creek then converges back where Mary's Creek and um, Clear Creek meet, it will then slow down a little bit and it'll reach equilibrium. But it has not been modeled.
Yeah, so just for reference, during Hurricane Harvey, that sound wall acted as a dam and backed water up into the forest of Friendswood. So I know people that were in boats doing rescues and going, going up and down the creek that personally witnessed that the water level on the downstream side was about three or four feet lower than what it was on the upstream side. And it was pouring over the top of it. And so I've asked since Hurricane Harvey if we could get those walls removed. At the park area.
Correct. And if they belong to Friendswood, we would have addressed it.
Some of the homes that flooded in the forest of Friendswood that got six or eight inches, may have gotten none had this been taken down.
Right.
So it, and I would think it's a very inexpensive thing to do.
For sure.
As I re- that's the hundred and twenty five dollar an hour bulldozer.
Yes.
Are they looking at any of the other sound walls, like the ones on five twenty eight?
They've primarily been looking at this sound wall at this time.
But we can look at also the uh, one on five twenty eight next to the forest bend detention pond, the park that's being built right there. Uh, presumably as another alternative if this is um, successful.
Thanks Samantha.
Thank you.
Great job. Item seven, city managers' report.
We have three short items. The council candidate packets have been posted on the city's website. State law stipulates that it's up by December ninth. Uh, so if uh, you would like to find that information, obviously, you can visit our website at friendswood.com. Um, also later this week, we will be, and sorry, Letty, can you go to the next two slides? No, no. Uh, one more, there you go. Um, as you know, we've been undergoing our automated water meter effort. We're about ninety five percent complete in the change out throughout the community. Uh, we have been running a pilot program this past month. I say month, it's since mid-October, uh, allowing for employees and council members that live in Friendswood to access the web portal in an effort to identify any bugs or issues with it. Uh, the portal's been extremely successful as Councilmember Rocky has pointed out this past uh, council meeting in November. Um, we will go live later this week with the public. They will be able to sign up their own account and set alerts. Uh, for instance, that's a screenshot of my usage uh, this, this past week. Um, I had my nieces and nephew in town and I set my alerts for any fifty percent usage more than the pri- prior uh, average. And I got alerted every day with five teenagers between the ages of twelve and sixteen in my house. So I'm grateful for the school to start back up and then be out of my house. Um, but that should go live this week. And lastly, I want to recognize our assistant EMS chief and the volunteer fire department, Roy Hunter. He was recognized by the state of Texas as the educator of the year at the annual Texas EMS uh, conference. Um, he is not in the audience this evening, but Greg, our volunteer fire department president is and would ask that you pass along our thanks and congratulations to him. And that's it.
Great job. Okay. Item eight, business item. A, consider awarding the Black Hawk Facility renovation project to Construction Masters of Houston Incorporated. I will make the motion. John Scott.
Uh, point of order, I think we need to remove it from the table. Cause this was tabled last month. So I make a motion to bring it back, bring it off, remi-. I make a motion to remove it from the table, bring it back from the table.
Second. First is a second. All in favor of remove it? Okay. But I need to make my motion again to uh.
We now need a motion in order to uh.
To approve it. I'll make the motion that we approve it. John, Hill, you gonna take us through quickly the.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, since we uh, last had the meeting, uh, last month, we have uh, compiled some information for you guys to uh, review. Uh, we put it in this uh, PowerPoint here. Uh, the uh, top two respondents, I uh, wanted to, uh, if you back up one real quick, uh, I wanted to mention to you is uh, Construction Masters of Houston. Uh, they're located, their office is located in Pearland. And uh, the second uh, rated uh, respondent prior to this uh, meeting was uh, Toucon and DBA Unbehegan Construction. Uh, they're located in uh, League City. So uh, here's a real quick look at the uh, uh, scoring criteria that was used. This was a, uh, something that was published in the uh, request for competitive sales proposals. Uh, this is something that went out to uh, everybody that was interested in uh, submitting. Okay. Uh, so uh, real quick, we'll go through a couple of the uh, uh, criteria that were uh, looked at. Uh, the first one um, being uh, fifty percent of the scoring criteria uh, was uh, what the cross pro- proposal was of the base bid. And uh, as you can see there, uh, they were uh, very close to each other, the, the top two uh, candidates uh, with a, uh, just a thousand dollar difference. So uh, uh, it was gonna uh, come down to the other uh, things that we're looking at. Uh, the second thing that we looked at was uh, the experience with the major subs on uh, similar projects. Uh, this was based on uh, the similar work that the contractors had done in the past five years. Uh, here you will see uh, uh, what uh, we were able to determine from the submissions. Uh, the uh, major thing is, uh, that we saw in uh, Unbehegan was that uh, a lot of their contracts were uh, under the million dollar range. Were uh, uh, looking at a three to five million dollar uh, project uh, in our project. Uh, so uh, the uh, the thing that uh, Construction Masters uh, uh, showed in their proposal was that uh, uh, they'd, they'd had, did have uh, experience in uh, projects of this magnitude. Uh, just a continual uh, continuation of the uh, uh, criteria here. Uh, you'll note that uh, ten of the listed projects uh, were uh, less than one million in Unbehegan's uh, submittal. And uh, we didn't have, uh, we, we had a, a four from Construction Masters that had uh, contract values of over two million dollars. Next. Uh, one of the next things that we looked at was the experience and qualifications of a key personnel. Uh, this is an extra slide that uh, we added this morning. It's not in your backup material, so let me go through this. Uh, so the key personnel, um, a- as far as Unbehegan was concerned, they did show uh, uh, that the project manager, he, he had a world of experience, uh, forty four years of the industry experience. Uh, the superintendent had uh, ten years. Uh, but if you look at uh, the uh, uh, Construction Masters, the key personnel that uh, we're looking at, uh, they had a uh, a, a load of experience in projects that were uh, valued over two million dollars. Next. Uh, next that we, next we looked at the uh, uh, ability to meet our schedule. Uh, so uh, uh, going over the uh, subcontractor qualifications and work history also. Uh, subcontractors, they uh, showed a prior work uh, uh, history listed on the submittal. So uh, that was good. Uh, but they did not specify uh, what projects that they had worked with in uh, uh, with major subcontractors in that uh, submittal that they had. Uh, and that's, that was a, a difference with Construction Masters. They did list that. Next. Uh, so this was a, uh, one of the big ones right here. Uh, quality assurance program and uh, safety record. Uh, one of the things that uh, uh, we did make note of was the uh, difference in their, uh, the EMR. Uh, Unbehegan uh, stated that they uh, did not qualify uh, for that. And uh, with Construction Masters, uh, that uh, was a qualification that they had. Uh, in addition to that, they're, they, they do have a quality assurance program uh, that uh, where they'll provide a quality control manager. Uh, so something that we've uh, learned in the uh, uh, renovation of a public safety building is uh, you really have to have a good quality control. Uh, and uh, if not, uh, you can easily see your project spiral out of control in uh, the cost and then you're gonna see, start seeing uh, change orders. And uh, that's something that we don't want to have happen in this uh, project. We want to make sure every, uh, everything that is ordered is correct and everything uh, going in is correct uh, from the get-go. So uh, those were the uh, the major differences between the two.
To, to add to Hill's comments, anytime you do in a rehabilitation effort, there's always unforeseen items. You're taking down walls of an existing structure that was built several years ago. What adds a layer of complexity to this project, much like we see in the public safety building, is we have a critical function that's operating in that facility twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, that we cannot stop operating while the construction takes place. Well, Public Works, and no offense to engineering, but Public Works has to operate in that same twenty four hour, the seven days a week mentality because we have water line breaks throughout the evening. We have need to use our shop throughout the evening when issues arise, so we can't afford to have to disrupt operations.
Um, let me ask you something about that because I know it's really important. Uh, they, both proposals had contingencies built into the proposals. I think it was seven and a half percent.
That's right.
Correct. And um, in, in the standard operating agreement that's also in here, it has the contingency for Construction Masters. But it also has an owner's contingency. It has the contractor's contingency and the owner's contingency, seven and a half percent each. Who is the owner? Who, who are we giving the ownership?
The city of Friendswood and none of the contingencies.
That, that's our contingency.
Correct. And none of the contingencies get approved without authorization by the city engineer myself. Uh, so at the end of the project, if we don't have an issue, we don't have a change order, then those funds are never expended.
Okay, and, and we're about to approve a change order in the very next item.
Correct.
Um, all change orders that are a part of an agreement, that will be brought to the mayor and council?
Change orders that exceed the uh, contract amount. So for instance, if you award this contract as staff recommends, you're awarding a contract of roughly five million dollars. If we exceed five million dollars, then we have to come back to city council for.
That's what I need. No, thank you, Ma.
Yes, sir.
Uh, some more information on their uh, quality insurance. Uh, so current workload, uh, uh, both companies did show that uh, this is uh, something within the realm of uh, what they could do. Uh, so there you see what the uh, overall ranking was. Uh, Unbehegan was uh, number two, Construction Masters was uh, one. And uh, I also put a, we also put a uh, screenshot down there of the reservations that we uh, held. There was uh, some discussion on uh, at the last meeting that uh, there was not uh, interviews. Uh, that uh, is true, but uh, that was true for uh, all of the respondents. Uh, there wasn't uh, anybody that uh, we uh, selected uh, and had them uh, come in uh, uh, and uh, treated any differently from anybody else. Uh, that was under consideration.
So the proposals for both firms are in the backup material. The rankings were based off of what those firms demonstrated their capabilities are based on those proposals.
Any other questions? Hey, all in favor? Seven, nothing. And I think we got a representative, Construction Masters. Thanks for being here tonight, sir. We look forward to you getting to work. Item B, consider ratifying the agreement and change order number one with PaveCon Limited for emergency repairs required on Bay Area Boulevard. I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Hanks and Rocky, any questions?
And real quick, before you vote, I'll just want to mention to you guys, with the recent rains, it's further exasperated the ability for this upgrade to dry, so it's delayed the project. You may have heard some folks inquire as to why they haven't seen any activity out there. Well, until it dries up, we can't do anything about it. And then we've also run into some supply chain issues. So, uh, I apologize for the inconvenience that it's caused. Um, obviously, if we didn't address the separation in pavement, uh, on that thirty-plus-year road, we would have had far greater issues, but it is a pain, and I understand that.
Any questions? All in favor? Item C, consider authorizing an end-user agreement with PM Construction and Rehab LLC through the Houston Galveston Area Council's contract number TP zero seven dash eighteen for the sanitary sewer evaluation survey phase four project, which will execute identified sewer main line and sewer manhole rehabilitation repairs. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Councilmember Rocky and Councilmember Branson, any questions on this one? This is I and I stuff, right?
Yes, sir.
Infiltration.
Inflow and infiltration. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Yeah.
Yeah, that thing.
Thank you. Item D, consider consenting to the extension of the license agreement between Greater Harris County nine-one-one emergency network and American Tower LP for the continued use of the telecommunications tower located at six, sixteen oh six Whitaker Drive, Friendswood, Texas.
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Graffon.
Second.
Councilmember Hanks, all in favor? Proposed resolutions and ordinances, consider an ordinance, an ordinance amending the city's general budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two by approving budget amendment thirteen.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? B, consider an ordinance amending the city's general budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three by approving budget amendment two and providing for supplemental-
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, wait a second. I just had a one quick question. Um, I did want, for John Scott's sake, um, to mention in item two, uh, the unencumbered capital of seven million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars is unencumbered for capital projects. Is that money earmarked to be spent in twenty twenty-three?
It is, and just as a reminder, um, encumbered funds are those that we've executed contracts for. Uh, unencumbered, uh, bonds, for instance, that have been issued, they're, we're waiting to execute a contract or funds that we haven't quite issued a PO or anything for.
Okay, but they are going-
They are going to be utilized. Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Item C, consider an ordinance amending chapter two, civil emergencies, article one, in general, section twenty-two dash one, definitions, article two, emergency management, section twenty-two dash twenty-four, authority to participate in countywide emergency management plan, section twenty-two dash twenty-five, emergency management director, section twenty-two dash twenty-seven, organization, section twenty-two dash twenty-nine, expenditure of public funds, and section twenty-two dash thirty, oath of personnel assigned functions or responsibilities. And article three, assisted, bear with me, article three, assistance to counties and other cities, section twenty-two dash fifty-eight, authority of city officials to furnish assistance in section twenty-two dash fifty-nine, rights and duties of officers of the Friendswood City Code, and repealing chapter twenty-two, civil emergencies, article two, emergency management, section twenty-two dash fifty-eight, interlocal agreement adopted of the Friendswood City Code to update definitions, duties, authority, and references for emergency management activities.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. I just want to know, this doesn't mean we have to do any more NIMS training, right? It's just cleanup. It's all cleanup, okay?
I figured it's been a minute since it had, then, uh, update to ordinance, so wanted to come back up here for that, but, uh, and I wanted to see you read all that, too.
Thanks, Brian.
Other than that, it's, it's just minor cleanup.
Okay. All in favor? Item D, consider a resolution authorizing the submission of a community development block grant mitigation method of distribution application to the Texas General Land Office for infrastructure improvement projects.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second.
And just to, uh, add on to that real quick before y'all vote, um, last month, you awarded a contract to Grant Works to represent us in the method of distribution allocated funds of four point six million, of which two point three had to go to low to moderate income areas. Uh, Grant Works was out there last week doing door-to-door surveys in hopes to identify low to moderate income areas. Until we identify the beneficiaries, we can't submit an application for consideration. So that's why we're asking y'all to authorize us to submit an application once that's identified. Uh, it'll be before the next council meeting.
Motion is second. All in favor? Consider a resolution adopting both financial policies and procedures, along with procurement policies and procedures for the city of Friendswood for federal grant programs.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Appreciate that.
We're going to run it again.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
We are adjourned. Three minutes to seven. How about that?